We'll call the county board in this session Tuesday, March 25th and rise and say the pledge allegiance to the flag.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Still stumble.
A lot of them are still getting worse.
Huh? Getting worse, isn't it?
According to Dale.
Roll call. Are we ready?
Yeah.
Next is a presentation of the agenda, motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Charles. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Correspondence, you've got two pieces of paper under correspondence, you've got the unassigned fund balance, and a letter from Barbara Droll. Does anybody want to have any questions on or anything? Next we'll go to public comment. Somebody from public, anybody want to comment? Hugh.
Yeah, I would. This is my hopefully last county board meeting for at least the foreseeable future, and I just want to thank everyone and all the good, it's really been a good time. It's been 12 years and I'm looking, it's Kenny and Biz and you Dan are the only people from the 2002 county board still here.
Is that right?
Yeah, a couple of people like Leo was taking a nap for a little bit.
He probably hasn't gotten up yet.
But anyway, you know, I've really had a great time and I've learned to enjoy, you know, like Southern Door is no longer a place to drive through to get to Northern Door County. You know, that's the way it was in the beginning and so, you know, I've learned to meet a number of people in Southern Door and I really kind of enjoy it. I think it's a great, the whole county is a great place and I think that in general, the county is very well run, so keep up the good work.
Thank you, Hugh.
Thank you.
Thank you for your year.
You'll be back, I'm sure, once in a while.
Yeah, right.
Steve, we're doing it. Is there any other public comment? Go ahead.
Hello, folks. My name is Joe Majeski. I'll use my former principal voice here. I am a former manager of the medical clinic down in Luxembourg, Luxembourg Medical Clinic, graduate of Luxembourg Cassco High School, raised my family up here in Door County in Jacksonport, and former principal at Sebastian School for over 24 years. But I'd like to be your representative for the first assembly down in Madison. I really think we have some issues in Door and Kewanee County that need very firm representation and I feel I can give you a very strong voice in Madison. This is where the best government occurs. This is where the best decisions are made. And this is where the initiatives should come from when speaking your voice in Madison. So I hope to be able to do that. I hope that you'll get a chance to get to know me and I would love to get to know you and through that relationship that we will continue on, I think we can really get some things done here for Door and Kewanee County that Madison can promote and take the lead on solving some of our issues. So thank you very much and I'll be here the rest of the day, so I hope to get a chance to meet you. Thank you.
Our public comment is supposed to be something with county business, you kind of snuck it in there, we shouldn't work together.
Oh, sorry about that.
Just so people know that. Anybody else want to make a comment? If not, we'll move to the special reports and we have a report on levy limits by Don Hochmeier.
John Hochmeier?
Well, go ahead. You can explain who he is.
Certainly. John is the, what title are we using? Outreach coordinator for Wisconsin Counties Association. John also is the current mayor for...
City of Verona.
City of Verona, so he has been in your shoes as well on the elected end of this. As you recall, I think it was Supervisor Mulligan who first raised the issue of us doing a presentation on levy limits and then our legislative committee led by Susie Kohout and Kathy Schultz and Dale Wiegand made the arrangements to have Mr. Hochmeier here to speak and give you the history of levy limits.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Maureen. Just a couple of things. I was here last year sometime in 2013.
September.
Was it September? And then we had talked about Kyle and I coming back and Kyle Christensen, who is now our Government Affairs Director, had a conflict today and he wanted to apologize, me to apologize on his behalf that he couldn't be here. For about 10 years, I was the Director of Insurance Operations for WCA. I oversaw the two liability companies and then also the WCA Groupail Trust. And then a little over two years ago, we had two of our lobbyists leave, including our Legislative Director, and I moved from the insurance side of things over to the legislative side. One of the things I did there is we went out, we met with a lot of counties. In the last year, I had been to over half of the counties throughout the state of Wisconsin, spoke to Chamber of Commerce's, lead women voters groups, you name it, the regional planning commissions, anybody that wanted to hear about county government. So last fall, when the WCA Board did their strategic planning, the number one issue that came up, they said, "We love the outreach that John is doing, but we want even more of it." So there was a decision that we were going to do some restructuring at the office. Kyle Christensen is now the, in charge of all the government affairs and he's doing an excellent job. I fill in for the legislative team as much as I possibly can, but my primary responsibility now is to do outreach to not only to counties, but anyone that does work with counties. And that's really extremely important that we get more information and more people educated about what we do in county government. The prior speaker talked a little bit about going down to Madison and representing this area and representing the county. One of the things that we also did, that WCA did in the last year, is we formed an informal caucus chaired by a Democratic Senator and by a Republican representative. We have over 35 members, current members of the legislature that have some connection to county government. Either they were county board supervisors, they were a county employee, they were possibly a county constitutional officer, and we just believe that that's really helpful. If we can get that group to meet, even though they're of opposite parties, if we can talk about legislation or potential legislation that we all have the same position on, that we can move things forward in a bipartisan manner. So we had the first meeting of that group in October and we're going to continue to do that. I think that that'll be very beneficial. As Maureen said, I am the mayor of Verona and I'm going through a nice campaign there as well. The other night, last week, Wednesday, I was taking my four by eight campaign sheets down and plywood sheets and I hit myself in the forehead and I have seven stitches. So I've got a little battle scar from my own campaign coming up. As I mentioned the last time I was here, I'm originally from Anethua County and I had served on the county board there from 1984 to 1992. The last term, I was the county board chair and administrative coordinator. It was after that then when I left to go to WCA. So this is my 40th year that I've been involved in local government and I'm pretty proud of that. I got involved when I was very young and I've worked at WCA. I've been elected official at the county level. I was a sergeant-at-arms for the State Senate and saw a lot of things go on at the federal level, mayor in the city of Verona. And I say this, I'm not just saying this because I'm in front of a county board today, my favorite level of government is county government. That is really where it's at, that's really where we impact the people. And if I had to pick just one that I was involved in, it would be in county government. So I'm going to go through, Maureen had said that we wanted to hear a little bit about levy limits, the history and what's the latest information on levy limits. So I'm going to go through that and if there's any questions as we go along, please feel free to ask me and then, you know, if we have time after that, we can take questions on other things that are going on at the Capitol as well. So we have the levy limit history and basics. Go back here.
Excuse me, John.
Yes.
Can you hit those blinds so the people back there can see it?
So a little bit about levy limits. They were created in 2005. It was Wisconsin Act 25. This is when Governor Doyle was governor. Some people are a little bit confused because counties were the only unit of government that were under both a rate limit, a county rate limit, and a county levy limit, two different things. The rate limits went into effect in the mid 90s and again, it was only counties that were under those rate limits and it really, it penalized the counties that were the most disciplined and fiscally responsible were the ones that were hurt the most by the rate limits. And we argued successfully two years ago, or in the budget two cycles ago, that we didn't think that counties should be under different limits than what other local units of government were. And they suspended that for a two-year period. And then in the last budget, we were actually able to get that repealed. So counties are no longer under a rate limit. It was Columbia County was the county that was the most impacted by it because what happened is it took your rate, the rate that was in effect in 1992, you could never exceed that rate. So prior to us getting the rate limit suspended, Columbia County had to reduce their levy by a million dollars in order to meet their cap, their rate cap. And in the end, they took that money from the highway department. It was the only place that they could take it. And we all know what happens when we don't maintain our roads. It costs us more in the end than if we had maintained them all along. And we make the argument at the Capitol that when we're talking about economic development and job creation, we need to have the infrastructure there to support that type of development. So it's extremely important that we have funding for the highways. So the, again, the levy limits were created in 2005. They were first imposed in 2005, in, for property tax year 2005. And those levy limits would restrict how much the counties can increase their levy from one year to the next. And I'll go through a few slides here, how it changed over the years. So from 2005 to 2010, levy limits were restricted to what the annual growth was in the change of property values. So if you had new development within your communities, in this case, within your county, you could go to that level. The first year, they set the new construction or the statutory minimum percentage at 3.86%. And the reason that 3.86% was in there, that was the maximum that was allowed for the school districts to increase the compensation for teachers. And that had been in place before there were ever any county limits or any other municipal limits. So the first year, they set it at not to exceed the 3.86%. This slide shows you then what happened over the course of the years. It went from the 3.86% to 2% and then it was locked in for two years at 3% and then beginning in 2011, we were at 0% or the rate of growth. Now, we all know what happened in 2008 with the downturn in the economy, things really came to the halt as far as development. So again, those municipalities or those counties that didn't see any or very little development, they were really strapped in their budgets. Yes, sir?
Can you, would it possible, I mean, is it, was this a correct statement? Same controls on the towns as are in the counties?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
All the, all local units of government were under the same controls then. Again, a point that I'd like to make here is that, and I'm from a rural area myself, so the rural areas where you didn't see much development, they were actually being hurt more. Usually the smaller units of government and the more rural you were, the more difficult it was for you to balance your budgets. So then, in this last budget cycle, there were some significant changes made to the levy limit program. Kyle and I worked extremely hard with the legislature, especially with the Joint Finance Committee, to try and get us a little bit more flexibility with the levy limit program and we will continue to do that. So now the counties are no longer provided any minimum percentage in the tax levy. In other words, that guaranteed, for example, that guaranteed 3.86% increase that we had in 2008 is gone. So again, today, our growth is limited to what the net new construction would be. And in Door County for 2013, you saw a positive 0.5%. Now, we've seen many municipalities and many counties that for five years in a row saw a negative number in their growth. So they were locked in at a 0% increase because they didn't see any growth. We're finally starting to see that turn the corner, but there still are municipalities that are in a net growth area. This slide, it's hard for you to read up there, but it's included in your packet. This is just a breakdown of the preliminary numbers according to Kyle, the breakdown of where each municipality within your county fell. Again, the county average was 0.5%. Some were higher, some were lower. So there are some exceptions to the county levy limits. And the first one, the first bullet point you see there is debt service. So if you're borrowing money, you do not have to include that in your levy cap. Now, you're not, you're not to borrow money for operating costs, but what we have seen in some cases is that, and I'll use my city for example, the city of Verona, we spend about $800,000 a year to fix our streets. And in the past, we borrowed half of it and we levied half of it. And we felt that some of it should be pay as you go, the people that were currently there should be paying for the maintenance of those streets and the rest, the 50%, could then go on our borrowing and would be paid back over a period of years. Well, as budgets got tighter, we backed away from that and we weren't using as much levy and we borrowed more, which is, which is fine, except you can't keep doing that year after year after year. And we were able, we've had significant growth and we've been able to reverse that trend. So there is an exception for debt service, that that is not included in the levy. There's also, if there's a, in the law, there is, if there is a transfer of service. Now, if I'm correct here, yet, in Door County, don't you have a county EMS service?
Yes.
A county EMS service. So if the decision were made that the county was no longer going to provide EMS service and then that service was picked up by the respective municipalities, the county would have to reduce their levy and the municipalities would be able to increase their levy in a corresponding amount. That doesn't happen real often, but it does happen from time to time where there is a transfer of service and then those adjustments are made. And of course, by referendum, the county or a municipality could increase their levy limits if they get the support of at least the majority of the taxpayers or of the voters in their municipality. So that is an option as well. So why are there levy limits in the first place? You know, I think most of us that serve in local government, we believe in local control and we should be able to make decisions here at the local level.
Could you back up one slide just a second, please?
Sure can.
You said debt service, the law provides, you can't use debt for operating expenses? Is that what you said?
You're not, you're not supposed to use debt service to cover regular, you know, regular what would be ongoing operational costs.
So how do you define that? Is fixing a road an ongoing operational expense? I mean, you used in your, half, you said 50% debt for your road repairs.
Mm-hmm.
Isn't that an ongoing expense?
Well, it's, again, it's not clearly defined and that's why we have seen some shifting. I don't have it in this presentation, but some of the other presentations we do, we take a look back, you know, 10, 15, 20 years and we can see that a higher portion, a greater portion of budgets statewide are now are using debt service because they are picking up some of those costs, which some people could say are operational costs.
Thank you.
Yes.
Could you define net new construction? Seems like when we talked at the committee, anybody who remodels their house or adds on or knocks one down and builds a new one doesn't count. Is that right?
If, if there's an increase in cost, now I'll use, let's say that there's a building in downtown Sturgeon Bay. And if that building is razed and a new building is built, let's just say for example that the value of the building today would be $200,000. If that building is torn down and you build a new building and the new value is $500,000, your net new growth there is $300,000, not the five.
Assessment value.
Right. And that's one of the...
Change in assessment value.
Yeah. That's one of the things that we're working with the legislature to try and change. Because in a lot of these cases, and I'm not saying in Sturgeon Bay that you have these buildings, but in a lot of places where, where the downtowns aren't doing real well, there's a lot of buildings that are dilapidated, there isn't a lot of value there to begin with. And to try and clean up and redevelop those areas, it would make some sense that whatever that the new value is, rather than deducting what the current value is, would make a lot of sense. We're all, go ahead.
But we would get no credit if somebody had a very small cottage, which, I mean, that's a lot of the construction in Door County, is a small cottage that then gets added on to and built, that's not net new construction?
If there's new assessment for them, if their assessment increases, yes.
Change in assessment of property.
Even if it isn't knocked down?
Correct. Correct. If there's improvements made and their assessment goes up, that's net, that's new value.
Right.
The other thing, and I know Maureen has been in some of these meetings as well, one of the things that we would like to try and convince the legislature is that if, if municipalities and if counties expend dollars for economic development purposes, we believe that that could be a good exception also. Because we all should be encouraging economic development and job growth. So that's something that we will continue to work on and I know that county executives and administrators, it's one of their priorities as well. So why impose levy limits? Levy limits have slowed property growth. Now, it's not all because of the levy limits. Certainly, the downturn in the economy has made a big difference. But if you take a look at the highlighted bar there, in the first columns, when you compare 2000 to 2005, in that timeframe, you can see that property taxes went up 5.7%. In the time period from 2005 to 2010, statewide, the average increase was 3.4%. So you can see that, that the average levy increase on an annual basis did go down. Now, we hear a lot of people talk about property taxes and that the taxpayers complain a lot about property taxes. Why I think a lot won't be done on the property tax issue at the state level is for this reason. In December, when the property tax bills go out, who sends those tax bills out? It's us. It's local government that sends the tax bills out. So our taxpayers, the property owners, they don't get mad at the state legislators, they get mad at us because they received the bill from us. So that's one of the reasons why they get upset and plus, they received that bill, you know, in December for the entire year. When they're paying sales tax, they're paying some other taxes. Sales tax, most people don't even realize that they're paying a sales tax because they pay it as they go. So although people complain about property taxes, to have significant changes, even though there have been some, you know, reductions and like I said, the growth has slowed, the fact that local government sends out those bills and people get mad at us when they receive those bills is why you're going to see other changes happen more rapidly, income tax and other changes, more than what you're going to see in the property tax area. This slide, and I know that I had this slide in the presentation the last time that I was here, and we're not picking on our other municipal friends, but if you take a look at the column where it has the increases by year for the county, you can see that county government, every year there has had, and these are statewide averages, we have had lower increases than any other unit of government. County government really has done their job and they've done it well and we have more mandates than anyone else as well. And we're still, still doing the job. Let's take that one back again. Yes, sir?
On that slide, you just had up?
Go back.
That one. Back one more.
One more?
When you were talking about the changes in property taxes and how it appeared between 2005 and 2010, the property taxes had gone down slightly. Just a note, if you look at other financing down below, it went from 5% up to 12%. So is that municipalities and counties borrowing more as a result of the tax changes and so the net result is they're still...
Debt is certainly a big part of that other financing. And that's what I was saying, that when we look at statewide averages, not just for counties, for school districts, for all other units of government, we're seeing more debt. They're carrying more debt. Now, some counties, I'll use La Crosse as an example, their percentage of debt hasn't gone up, but they're doing it more through user fees. So it's whatever the policy that's determined by that local unit of government, some have gone more to pay for service, to feed for service, rather than borrowing more money. Each municipality has done it different. These are statewide averages.
Right. So everybody's finding a way to do it, but it appears that overall, the debt is increasing across the entire state.
The debt is increasing.
As a result of changes in levy limits.
Yeah, the debt is increasing and one of the things that I hear a lot is, well, the cost to borrow money right now is really inexpensive, so what's wrong with borrowing money? Well, it's not always going to be that way. And our level of debt is going up. And that's something that we need to be very concerned about, not only for us, but for our children, for our grandchildren.
Many people don't understand that, that debt that you're acquiring is still costing interest you're paying for, which is not going toward the services you're providing.
That's correct. I remind people all the time that it's not just the principal you're paying back, it's the interest you're paying back as well. Yes, sir?
Just, I believe the county has a debt borrowing limit, I can't remember what it is, 10% of the assessed valuation, is that it?
Yeah, there are limits and in the case of our city, we actually even have a more stringent limit than what the state sets up. So I'm not sure, Maureen, what your limit is here for Door County.
And I, our finance director isn't back, surely?
Well...
It's 5%.
Okay. So if we're, if the county is what, I forget how many billion dollars it is, it's in here someplace. What's the assessment for the equalized valuation for Door County? Seven million or seven billion?
Billion.
It's not even realistic to even borrow 1% of it, don't you think?
Well, you know, my position on debt is, I think there's good debt and there's bad debt. I don't want to be here today just talking about city of Verona, but I'm very close to the issue. And I was involved in negotiating to get a business to come to Verona and it's Epic Systems, they're an electronic medical records company. We paid a significant amount of money to build an underground parking ramp for them, to build an on-off ramp. We got some help from the county, we got some help from the state. That company today has a value of $325 million. They're currently paying 27, or 29% of the total taxes in the city of Verona. To me, that was a good investment. When you have 6,900 employees with very good salaries, it's an environmentally friendly company, creating good jobs for the community and a number of other businesses that have started up from that. To me, that's good debt. And even sometimes when we buy a residence, my wife and I built a new home in 2008. We didn't build a new home necessarily because we needed a bigger home, our kids were all graduated and gone and doing their own things. We bought it as an investment. So I think you have to, my opinion, you have to be careful on what you borrow money for, but you certainly, that there is debt, that's good debt, that's an investment. But you have to be, you have to be very smart about your debt. So we saw that slide, okay. Levy limits are popular among the public. I mean, when I'm going door to doors and other people are going to doors to door, running for office, one of the things that they hear all the time is that taxes are too high. Taxes are too high, but which services do they want cut? That's what I ask all the time. And I haven't found a person yet in the city of Verona who said, "I want you to cut this service." They like the services that we're providing and they want more services. But overall, people, the public, don't like taxes. So when people are campaigning, they're going to doors, you know, they talk about how they're going to limit tax increases. So it's popular for the campaigns and, you know, currently, we've got the governor and the legislative leaders, they're campaigning and they're promising that they're going to have property tax controls and limit that growth as well. And it's even more prevalent right now since the downturn in the economy and a lot of people in that baby boomer stage moving into retirement to non-fixed incomes. There's a lot of people that have not seen increases in their pensions and actually have seen cuts in their pensions over the last several years. And not just people that, there's a lot of people that don't have pensions and they just cannot afford any increases. And so we have to remember that when we're taking a look at our budgets and our taxes, we have to, we have to consider what people's ability to pay is. So what can we do? We're going to continue to work with the legislature so that we can gain flexibility. Counties, counties aren't big spenders. They never have been. I don't believe that they ever will be. They do a really good job with their budgets. They always find a way to get things done and we're very proud of that. Levy limits are not going to go away. And even if, let's say that the governor's office and both houses of the legislature changed, the public wouldn't stand for huge increases, tax increases. It's just not going to happen. So we're going to have to find ways and build in more flexibility for us as local units of government that we continue to provide the services that we are with limited dollars. So we need to educate the legislators and the public about the impact of those levy limits. As I drive around the state, one of the things that I notice more than I ever have before is our failing infrastructure. And when we see our highways, when we see our bridges deteriorate, it's a big problem for us. And when you have potential businesses that are looking at coming into your communities or businesses that are currently in your community that are... or businesses that are currently in your community that are looking to expand, they look at those things. They look at what the infrastructure is, they take, they look at what the attitude of the local elected officials are for the services that they need to provide to make sure that their companies can remain viable and be successful. So one of the things I think that we need to do as county government, is for the most part, people do not understand what we do. And we impact their lives in so many ways every single day, but yet, they don't, they don't know what we do. We did, I'm not sure who from Door County was all at our legislative exchange, but we had a little program where Sarah and David on our staff went out with a camera into one of the municipalities, and they asked people who, you know, if they knew who the president was. Everyone knew who the president was. Almost everyone knew who the governor was. Not everyone, but almost everyone knew who it was. But when they were asked the question, "Who's your county board supervisor?", most didn't have any clue. And one of the other things that I thought was hilarious is, one of the people that they interviewed, they asked, you know, her thoughts about county government and what we do, and she said, "I don't know anything about that, so I asked my husband. He's the one that tells me what to do." Well, her husband was also one of the people that was interviewed, and when they asked him, he said, "I have no clue." So it's, you know, it's something that in county government, we really need to do. And it's an ongoing effort of education, not only for our county board and for our employees, but for the public. As you know, and you have an election coming up here, I don't know what you're looking at as far as potential turnover, but there is a lot of potential turnover. We've got one county board, I just spoke to their chairperson last week. They have a 14-member board, they have 11 contested seats. There will be at least eight new members on the county board. At least eight new of the 14 are going to be new. And we see some counties with very little turnover, some, Kiwanee County, has the potential of having a lot of turnover as well. So we really need to continue the education effort that we do. And I'm going to take a little break in this presentation, and because it made me think about it, that outreach flyer that I handed out as well. So in December, when I became the outreach manager for WCA, I wanted to put something together. That is not the entire list, but those are the types of presentations that we are putting on for counties and anyone that's interested in county government. And we would be more than happy to do it, whether it's myself, or Kyle. Mike Blaska has done some, we've had legal counsel do some. We are more than willing to come anytime to do these presentations so that we can help you do your jobs better. And if there's things that are not on that list that you would like added to the list, you let us know. Because we work for you, and we want to do as much as we possibly can for you. So with that, a little sales pitch on the outreach efforts. I guess that's all I had, comments and questions. But let me just say a little bit, too, when I talked about turnover, when I talked about turnover at the county level, I think as of, as of right now, there's about 16 members of the state legislature. I think it's four members of the state senate that announced that they're not running for reelection. And it's like 13 or so, I think, on the state assembly, including your representative from this area, that are not running for reelection. The joint finance committee is made up of 16 members, four of those members. So a quarter of the joint finance committee will be new in the next cycle, at least a quarter of new. So it is an ongoing education effort that, that we have, and I just can't repeat that enough, that, and we can do, you know, we do our thing at the Capitol as much as we can as the paid lobbyists for you. We have done our cap teams, and we appreciate the support that we're getting from our counties to get people to come down three times a year and have, you know, a full-day lobbying effort on specific agenda items. There's, we have call-to-actions at times when we need you to contact legislators, and that's extremely important. If, if a legislator gets eight, 10, 12 phone calls or emails from their constituents, that means a lot more than us even walking into their office. And we've had a lot of people, Maureen, and just other county executives and administrators and county board supervisors, that have just been fantastic when we need that communication to take place, that they do it. But in order for you to make those calls or send those emails, you have to be educated on those issues, and we're going to do our best to make sure that you are. So, Mr. Chairman, I am willing to respond to any questions.
Okay.
I wondered, going back to levy limits, if you would talk about a concern that I have heard members of our finance committee, a provision of that law that has to do with reducing our own debt, paying back our own debt, and how that, I mean, I know the finance committee is concerned about this, but I don't know if the whole county board is aware of what happens if we pay back our debt and how that affects our limit.
Yeah, and I'm not real familiar with what you're-
Matter of fact, I'd ask Shirley, our finance director, to come up. She's the most well-versed on this topic.
I'll just say this, as far as, you know, my own, my own personal opinion with that, and we have debt, we have adequate reserves for the City of Verona. The most difficult thing for me that I've ever experienced in local government is when people see a pot of money, they have to spend that money. And you need to have adequate reserves, you need them for cash flow purposes, you need to have, in case there's an emergency, and I'll use, you know, Barnaville or Stoughton or some of those places where they have the tornadoes, there's a need for immediate money. And the federal government or the state's not going to step in immediately. And also, having adequate reserves is very important when you go and get your bond rating. And if you, if you don't have adequate reserves, you're going to pay a higher rate of interest every time you borrow money. So that's just a little bit on the reserves.
So basically, and what we have talked about in the past, that yes, Door County could go and pay off their debt, and that has been mentioned on a number of occasions. But remember that once you pay that debt off, that lowers your percentage of what your budget can be. So if you have $2 million in principal and interest, that goes away. So it doesn't become, get added in, it's not, no longer operations, you have that much less monies to use. And depending upon how, there are several ways that you can structure a payment like that, and you would almost have to go to your bond council and get that information to make sure that it's done correctly. But it could go below the line, but only under certain circumstances, and I don't have that information today.
So now that you've made those comments, and I appreciate that, I understand now what the question was. You have to have a plan in place, how you're going to structure your debt and pay that debt off. If you go and pay, you know, all your debt, or you pay a significant amount of your debt off at one time, it will have a major impact on how you budget in subsequent years. So again, you need to be really smart, you need to, you know, if you, if you have good financial advisors, listen to those financial advisors, and you just, you have to be smart about it. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I think we're fortunate to have some very good people working in our finance department. But when you mentioned before the levy limits, a few years back, you could almost get credit if you lowered your limit and you could carry forward. I think it happened for maybe about two years. And that made sense, but when they wiped that out and said, "We no longer can, can carry forward," they forced counties and other municipalities to go to the highest level possible just to sustain where we were, which, again, like you say, you were, you were not able to be frugal. You could not justify cutting taxes and saying, "Next year, we're going to be able to operate the same way." Is there, is there any logic behind government thinking that way?
The statement that you just made is the exact argument that Kyle and I made when we met with the administration and with the joint finance committee, and in the end, then the legislature. And they did make some changes. There is some carryover that is allowed, that the county board can do on their own. And then there's also, you can even go to a higher level of carryover from prior years if you do it by two-thirds, I think it's two-thirds, Maureen, of the county board, I believe. So we built in some flexibility. We were making the same argument. We said, "Why are you, why are you encouraging bad behavior?" There might be years where the levy doesn't have to be as high, but then there might be, you know, a different project that comes along where all of a sudden, you need that money. Let the local units of government decide how to do that. So we got a little bit of flexibility, we're going to try and get even more. So some of that carryover, that provision is back.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? I was going to say that the reason that the property tax is the most hated tax is that you have to pay for your property tax on your own checkbook, where your income tax is deducted before you even see the money.
Right.
But how you overcome that?
Right.
I have no idea. That's why everybody hates property tax.
Yeah, exactly. Well, again, I appreciate the opportunity to come up. We're willing to come up anytime. If you want us to do any of those presentations, take a look at that list, and we'll make sure that we have someone here for you. And I'll stick around for a while, so, thanks for having me today.
Thank you.
You're going to know more about China than you ever thought you would. Is Bill here?
Yes.
Where is he?
Bill Shuster is not here yet. Shuster is.
Bill Shuster, where are you?
I think we're going to go at 11:30 on that one.
11:30.
Oh, okay. What?
We're going at 11:30.
Okay, then we'll skip that right now and go to the administrator's monthly report.
Yes, in your packets, you have a copy. I think it begins on page five of your packets, or page four. We've had a couple of changes with the mission team. As you recall, there's about 18 employees from a variety of different departments. We have managers and line staff involved, represented, formerly represented, currently represented staff. We've had two changes. Ted McCartney has retired. Cindy Zellner Aylers has stepped aside because of her workload. So we have John Klowgi has volunteered to take Ted's spot. And Dawn, I always mess up her name, but let me give it a shot, Vandevoot, not bad? Okay. Has agreed to join the team, so we have a full complement on the mission team. They're going to be working to create a survey of our employees. Remember, the mission of the mission team is to address morale issues and to unify the team. So they've decided that a good first step of that is to do a survey of our employees and see. We think we have many employees that are very happy every day that they come to work. So they're going to kind of gauge what the temperature is of the employees through a survey. The second item on the March monthly report, ADRC, was the first featured, or the second featured article in the Peninsula Pulse. A copy of that article is in your packet, and I'm currently working on next month's version of the column for the Peninsula Pulse, and I'll report on that probably at your May meeting. That's all I have to report this month.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 25.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Dale, seconded by Liz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That has passed. Susan, you want to bring up pending business? You're in charge here.
Okay. After the January board meeting, people had questions, and I followed up with those who spoke to see, try to get specifics on exactly what their questions were. And then we started digging, and there were, found lots of materials, not all which addressed the questions that were asked, but tried to select some. I'm aware that you've got a lot, but that's why the Q and A was put there, to try to guide you through which articles addressed which things, if you were looking for a particular answer. The committee reviewed the materials, and we worked, they reviewed a draft of the Q and A, and did some additions, and some, we tweaked the resolution based on one of the concerns that one of you expressed in January, and took one, the word partisan out of line 17. So we hope that the materials you got were able to give you more background, and that you had time to consider this. So I will make a motion that we adopt Resolution 201405 in support of a nonpartisan redistricting system.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chuck. Are there any questions? Any questions on it? I'm sure everybody read all the pages on it. Tim?
I, I noticed you said there was $1.9 million spent in litigation costs in the last redistrict.
Yeah, and I think the total, there was an update to then, it's 2.1 million now. That actually, we probably should, yeah, anyway, yes, that's what was first-
You seem pretty confident that in some way, shape, or form, this resolution, or this type of modification to the redistricting plan is going to somehow prevent any further litigation?
Well, we can only go by the results of what's happened in Iowa, and a couple of those articles address the fact that since Iowa passed this in 1980, or a similar method, they have never gone to court. It has been handled within the legislature following the process, and that the only costs have been the normal agency that drew the plans, their budget. In fact, it said the largest cost was driving the maps and the materials to the various hearings, the gasoline, that there were really no litigation costs involved. So can we be sure that's how it would work in Wisconsin? We can't be absolutely positive on that. But hopefully, it will work the way it does now.
But then somehow, we have to fund this new-
No, no, we, it would be, in the bill, it talks about the Legislative Reference Bureau doing it in Wisconsin. We already have that agency. They're the ones that do the summaries of all the bills and all kinds of other things. So it would be an existing agency that would do it.
Are there any other questions? Ken?
I'm still concerned about this. There were, there are a number of things that bother me. I'm not going to make a federal case out of it, but the Democrats are the ones sponsoring this. You're turning this still into a political situation, a partisan situation. It's all sponsored by the Democrats who are out of power, they wanted nothing to do with it. When they were in power and had the control, now that they don't, they're grasping at straws to try to regain that, and this is just a ploy to do that. Whether you see it or not, that is the case. The other thing, and you've got it right here on page 23, it's all sponsored by the Democrats. The other thing that struck me, and I'm trying to find it here, I thought, ah, I've got to bring this up, and now I can't find it. But I was surprised that the League of Women Voters were going to sponsor a bill that prohibits them from voting. It says right in here, and I'm still looking for it, I thought it was at the top of one of these pages, "Bring it back to one man, one vote." And it struck me, well, they don't want to vote. Okay, it's not for me. I don't like that, because I've got a wife and three daughters that always vote, but if the League of Women Voters want to promote this and take the vote away from women, well, who am I to stand in the way of the League of Women Voters?
Can I comment?
Okay. Susan?
You all, you all probably know that I did a presentation on this for League on Friday, and I didn't have a joke for the beginning of that presentation, but now I do. Thank you, Ken.
Okay. Is there any other questions? If not, go to the voter board and vote up or down.
Oh, and one more thing, Mr. Chairman, if I may. As much as I see this as a political ploy by the Democrats, and something that doesn't belong here, I am in support of it because something needs to be done.
Okay. Wow.
Can I add one other?
Sure.
Quickly, that I meant to say. I read a million articles when I was finding this stuff, and one of them was about Illinois. And the irony of that article was that there is a similar bill in their legislature. And you may know that Illinois, the governor is a Democrat, and the legislature is democratically controlled, so the minority that is working to change it in Illinois to the Iowa method by the Republican Party. I mean, really, it needs to be fixed. Nobody is doing this well.
These, these people in the state, they need to get shook up. Both sides might help.
Okay. Anything else? Now we'll go to the vote.
So why do we have a new camera?
No, you got to vote.
Did I take it?
After all that-
No, it didn't take it.
You know.
After all that, it passed. 19, yes. Zero, no. Two, a. Yeah. Next item is resolutions coming up. I'm just searching for the, get the resolution on. I'd like to have a motion to pass resolutions 2014-15.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Okay. David made the motion, and Susan seconded it. Susan, why don't you read it?
Okay, I got to find it real quick.
Page 49.
Sorry. There we go. I got it. Okay. "To the Door County Board of Supervisors in memoriam Priscilla Meyer. Whereas Priscilla Meyer passed away on February 23, 2014, and whereas Priscilla Meyer served as Register of Deeds for Door County from January 3, 1977, to January 5, 1987. Whereas, in addition, Priscilla served in various county offices for many years prior Whereas, in addition, Priscilla served in various county offices for many years prior to becoming Register of Deeds. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors assembled in regular session this 25th day of March, 2014, extend our sincere sympathy to Priscilla's family with this acknowledgement of her dedication to the citizens of the county of Door."
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that has passed unanimously. Proclamation, Door County Economic Development Corporation. Mark Firestone, why don't you make that motion? You have one swan song.
All right.
Since you're on the committee.
Okay. I'd like to support the 2014-16 proclamation, Door County Economic Act Development Corporation Day, April 14, 2014. And I know Sam Pearlman was in the crowd. Sam?
Yeah.
Want to come up and just give a few words on it?
Do you make the motion then?
I made the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mark Miller. Come forward, Sam.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're just very thrilled that this year, 2014, represents the 25th anniversary of the founding of the Door County Economic Development Corporation. We're very proud of that, and we're very proud to announce that as of this morning, our April 14 Economic Development Corporation annual meeting is completely sold out. So, and we are just flattered and humbled by the support that we've received from the community. We have sold out our annual meeting in the past, but never quite this fast. So we are just very thrilled and thankful.
Are there any questions? By the way, we have 29, 30, 30 members attending from the county board and county government, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that has passed. Proclamation of Travel and Tourism Week. Would someone like to make a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
You?
Second.
Seconded by Joel. Somebody like to read it? Well, we'll read the last one. Now therefore be resolved that the Door County Board of Supervisors hereby support and promote May 3 to 11, 2014 for Travel Tourism Week in Door County, and urges the citizens of Door County to join in this special observation and appropriate events and commemorations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that has passed. Hugh Mulligan, want to make a motion and then on Resolution 2014-18 on pledge for Dunes?
Hang on, I just went blank here.
52.
I know, but it just turned off and back to zero again. Hang on. All right.
I'd like to make a motion to, for the county to adopt Resolution Number 2014-18, which is the Dunes, donation for Dunes Lake.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Biz. You want to explain it then?
Sure. They're making a study from the Dunes Lake, and this is a pledge for $2,000 to help do that. The concept is reduce the number of, or to, I guess, improve the downfall from the sewer treatment up there.
Does anybody got any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that has passed. The next one is approval of non-native invasive plant species control GLRRI grant, U.S. Forest Service. Hugh, you want to explain that, make a motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that the county adopts Resolution 2014-19, which is a grant to us in the amount of $28,000 to study the non-invasive invasive species.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Ben. You want to explain any more on it, or?
You know, it's, it's a grant to help study these different invasive species. I think it's money well spent, doesn't cost the county a penny.
Okay. All, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that has passed. Next one is the Water Quality Targeted Runoff Management Plan. Hugh?
Again, I'd like to make a motion that the county adopts Resolution 2014-20, which I believe is a grant in the amount of $150,000. They go towards design assistance in the, in the construction of a manure runoff system.
Okay.
Second.
Ben seconded it already, I think he did, you know. Oh, yeah, that's right, correct. He seconded the last one.
Yeah. I'll second this one.
Does anybody got any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that has passed. Fees for the sheriff. Biz, you're up.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2014-21, fees for the sheriff's office.
Okay, is there a second? Kathy? Go ahead.
What, what's going on here is, it's been about five years since this was looked at, the fees for the sheriff. And the first two, number one and number two, number one was at $35. We want to go with a flat fee of $65. Number two, the execution of judgments was $60. We want to go to 65. And then if you go down to number eight, that was $60, and we want to go to $65. And all of the rest of them that I didn't mention, there's no change. They did, the sheriff department did contact other counties, and this is consistent to where the other counties are at. It's time, it's time to update. And I guess what I can say about this is, if a private person or an attorney, you know, thinks the fee is too high, or, or they don't really care to go with the sheriff to serve the paper, they can go with private. And content, there's, there's other people that serve papers, that, you know, whether it's a civil action or whatever is going on, a divorce or whatever going on, they, they don't have to do it through the sheriff department, because there's many other ways that you can get the paper served. And like I said, this is consistent with what other counties are charged, so we had unanimous vote, the people at our last highway, our county law enforcement committee meeting, and passed unanimously, and it's here at county board for your approval.
Susan?
Quick question. This is money that stays here. It doesn't, isn't...
Years ago, service, paper service fees were part of the sheriff's salary. And, and back in the days of the depression and stuff, sheriffs made a lot of money. That's not the case today. The sheriff does not get to keep any of this money. It's all turned back to the county.
But I meant, doesn't go to the state?
No.
All of this is county money.
No, no, this money stays here and, and, you know, the, surely has the impact of, the fiscal impact there off to the side toward the bottom of the resolution, and, no, there, the money all stays here, and we, there was a couple of them there for like, number three and number four, the travel, they used to charge mileage and stuff, and we no longer do that. It's included right in, right in the fee. So there was, there was, you know, they don't charge there at all.
Is mileage.
Are there any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that has passed. Okay. Ben or Joel, you want to, which one do you would like to lease agreement for wireless?
Well, we flipped a coin and I lost, so here goes. I'll start by making a motion to approve Resolution 2014-22.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by David. Well, I'll make, cleat, cleat, put down, cleat. This is your last swan song.
Oh, don't worry about that.
We're waiting for a speech from you, by the way.
You are.
It might be waiting long.
Go ahead, Ben.
Sure. The long and short of it is, the county owns a nice, high piece of ground on Brussels Hill, and Verizon would like to build a tower there, and this agreement basically says that they can do that, and in exchange, we get to put some of our communications gear on that tower. It's a win-win for everybody, and, yeah, it should be approved.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions? I'm sure everybody read, what is it, about 20 pages of it?
A lot. A lot. In all four colors.
In all what?
In all four colors.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that has passed. The next item is appointment and compensation in interim building, the grounds director. Maureen, you want to speak to this, or Kelly?
Absolutely. Actually, I think I can...
Let me get a motion on the floor.
Certainly.
Motion by Ben, seconded by Dale. Okay, go ahead.
As you all know, back in Friday, March 7, our Buildings and Grounds Director Ted McCartney retired. There, in the interim with this vacancy, we need to have someone who can answer any questions regarding our failing water systems or failing heat, and make sure that the job continues to move forward. And Shane Baker is currently the maintenance technician within that department, and has graciously stepped up to the plate and agreed to be the interim Buildings and Grounds Director until we choose another. The additional compensation as set by our Human Resources Director is the base of the new pay grade, so it is an additional $3.36 per hour for Mr. Baker. As soon as we hire another Buildings and Grounds Director, his fee will go back to what it was prior to being named the interim. And this is, of course, subject to your confirmation today.
Okay, has anybody got any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that has passed. The next item, pardon, next item is the salaries of elected officials. Have a motion, get a motion, get it on the floor. Motion by Dave, seconded by Cletus. Do you get Kelly to explain this, or?
Certainly.
Kelly, where are you?
I could explain to you.
Is she there? I don't see her. She skipped out.
Oh.
Do you want to explain it a little bit, or not?
Sure. In, in, our Human Resources Director had, remember when we did the Whipley Compensation Study, we had looked at three additional counties? I think they were Wapaka, Akonto, and, thank you, Maranet. And Kelly applied the same principles when she looked at the salaries for the clerk of court and the sheriff. We know that the current incumbents are not going to run for reelection, so now is the time for us to address this ordinance. I think that's pretty succinct, and I don't think there's anything more to add.
Has anybody got any questions? Go ahead, Roy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 2014-24 sets the salary for these two elected officials for the next four years. These individuals are the most recognized officials in our county. In fact, you might even say that our sheriff is the face of the county, and he is also expected, or he or she is also expected to serve a population that is three to four times greater than the citizens of our county. The sheriff manage, is a department of over 90 employees with several different departments. Resolution 2014-24 indicates only a 2% increase at the end of four years for the clerk of courts, and a 2.8% increase at the end of four years for the sheriff. Federal, state, and even the county board gets a set salary for the duration of their term of office. A decrease in a moving salary scale, as indicated in this resolution, does not reflect the amount of work and management at these two positions demand. Therefore, I move to amend Resolution Number 2014-24 to establish the annual compensation for the clerk of circuit court be $65,000 for each year of the term of office, and that the compensation for the Door County Sheriff be $90,000 for each year of the term in office. This reflects an approximately 6% increase over the 2014 salary, which I believe is the very minimum that should be set for these two positions.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Chuck. Any discussion on the amendment? I can say that at the administrative committee, we took the averages of the counties around us, and that's how the, Kelly came up with the compromise of the new positions, and that's what we did, and that's how we came up with those salaries, you know, so. Like, Kelly's not here to explain, but that's...
But, Mr. Chairman, the salary of the sheriff is almost in line with the salary of our chief of, that's proposed to your office, almost in line with the salary of our chief of police in St. the of St. Bay, that only has 21 employees and very few departments.
Correct.
And our clerk of court, we have major capital crimes going on. We have a major capital case last year, we have another major capital case this year, so that job is very responsible. And these increases that were being proposed here in this original resolution doesn't even reflect that we're going to vote on the next resolution for the salaries of compensating for the certain county employees, unless the matter. So I believe this amendment is very fair.
Okay. Anybody else got an opinion? Susan?
I don't have an opinion. I guess I'd like to hear more from the administrative committee that spent some time considering this, if they have other thoughts on it.
And, excuse me, I'm sorry for the interruption. Our Human Resources Director is on her way down, so she can better explain. She applied the same principles that we applied for the pay grades for, that were performed as part of the Whipley Study. She looked at the exact same counties when she came up with the salary for the sheriff and the clerk of courts. That's why the adjustment was made. So I would, if you don't mind, if there's other comments, we can certainly make them.
No, we can take it until she gets her...
I think it's important that you hear from your Human Resources Director.
Kathy?
The question that I have is, on these counties that were comparable, was it strictly by population? You know, you have to remember in Door County, the population explodes in the summer months, actually about nine months out of the year.
What I can tell you, the, we still have collective bargaining that goes on with our sheriff's deputies and with our EMS personnel. To go beyond the pool of comparable counties that we use for those negotiations prompted the selection of those three counties that we used for the Whipley Study. Going beyond them introduces a brand-new wrinkle. It could introduce a brand-new wrinkle when we do our collective bargaining. So that's why we were very careful in the counties that we chose, that they are among the, the pool of six or seven counties that we use as part of our collective bargaining agreements. Kelly Handy is in the room, and...
Come forward, Kelly, and explain the rationale that you used in the salaries for the elected officials.
And perhaps we can bring her up to speed. There was an amendment on the floor to raise the ordinance that's before the county board, sets the rate of pay for the sheriff to 84,000, and then a small increase over the next two, four, or five years until the next term of office. And that was a $90,000 amendment, Kelly. And then for the clerk of courts, the way the ordinance is presented in your packets, it's 64,000...
No.
$89. And the amendment was to increase that to $65,000.
No.
Yes. For the four years.
The rate, here it is, right here, you know, the rate is...
But I'm talking about the amendment, perhaps the clerk would...
The amendment was $65,000 for the clerk of court.
There you go.
Raising it from the 2,000 rate of 64,89, and it drops down to 2,050, actually 62,600. And sheriff rate is 83,160 right now, and that raised to $90,000.
$90,000?
Yes.
Okay. What I was reading was the 2014 rate. It's actually the 2015 rate.
Correct.
83,160 to 90,000 for the sheriff, and 62,600 for the clerk of courts to 65,000.
Correct. There's an amendment to put that in there, but...
So perhaps if you could explain how you arrived at the ordinance that's before the board?
What I looked at were the three comparable counties that we also used in the Whipley Study that was just adopted by the full county board in December. And those three counties, I took the average between the three counties to come up with the 2015 rate for both the sheriff and the clerk of courts. And then I added a 1.5% increase each consecutive year after that until you get to 2018.
Okay. David?
What was the policy for fee schedule, for the salary basis in the past? How was that determined?
I, I think what we did, as far as I can remember, is that we compared the comparable counties of Door and tried to stay right within that range.
And did we change that every year, as we're doing in this cycle, or did we stay the same?
Well, we changed it, if we did change it, we changed it before the election paper, nomination papers have to be taken out, like, this has to be done this month, period,
nomination papers have to be taken out, like, this has to be done this month, period, because I think they take out April 1st?
Fifteen.
April 15.
April 15.
Did it stay fixed for their elected term?
In this case, we're suggesting they go for...
In the past, did it stay fixed?
Yes.
For the elected term?
Yes, it did.
No, I think there was an increase over a couple of years.
Well, they had an increase, Mr. Chairman, but it was fixed and it stayed at that fixed
schedule.
Right.
It was never altered.
Exactly, exactly. But over the period of four years or two years, whatever terms were, they did increase a little bit, but they were fixed at this time.
Exactly.
So they're very similar to how this resolution is being presented now?
Yes.
Which is a fixed starting point of 2015, plus one and a half percent each year as a increase.
Or whatever percentage.
That's correct.
And, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Ken.
I'm going to defend the Admin Committee on this. We took the comparables, we discussed and debated it, and it was unanimous, I believe, the vote that these were fair and equitable wages based on the comparables.
Okay. Ben?
I'm going to go along with Ken on this one.
Gee, whoa!
I should have warned you, Ken.
My heart, I can't take it.
Sorry, sorry for the shock there. But I appreciate the sentiment and the idea that Supervisor Engelbreit has put forward. However, I think for the reasons already stated by Ken Fisher, and the fact that, you know, we need to watch our operating budget, and, you know, this is, I don't know, going to cost, what, twenty-some thousand dollars that, you know, we don't really know where it's going to come from. So I think we should pass this as-is without the amendment.
If I could, if I could add something that correlates to an earlier discussion we had on levy limits? The allowable levy limit for last year for Door County was a half a percent. That amounted to, and we have our Finance Director in the room, about $119,000 was the allowable increase under levy limits in Door County for our entire $24 million property tax budget. Last year, as you recall, one bill alone, AT&amp;T, required that we pay a portion of the 911 operating system. That amount alone was $81,000. So the choices are before you, are very difficult each and every budget year, and it's very timely that we heard the levy limit presentation. We've heard that levy limits are not going away. And the report that I have on growth is that we can expect, I'm looking at our Building Inspector, I don't think growth is going to continue at much of a higher pace than a half a percent for this upcoming year. So the choices are difficult.
Let David speak first, because he has the information. Go ahead, David.
I just wanted to add additional consideration that the Administrative Committee talked about and thought about, was when we brought the Whipley Study in place, we as a Board approved that Whipley Study to be put in place for our compensation plan for 2014 moving forward. And we did single out positions we used across the Board, the existing positions, and we said the pay rate would remain the same unless they exceeded 115%. And when a position was replaced, i.e. a new elected position, a new employee in a different position or department coming in, we would institute the existing compensation package at that point in time. And these two individuals are not running for reelection, so there would be two new people coming in for reelection. And the people being running for election would be aware of what this is prior to taking out the papers. And at this point in time, I guess I would have to say it doesn't mean there's going to be a lack of candidates for those positions. And they would know what this is before they ran for it. But in keeping with our overall position as the County Board of we're instituting this Whipley Study under a new compensation plan, this fits with that, two new people coming in, we're reducing it or changing it to what the compensation study is. And it will be modified or looked at annually going forward.
As an example, the Buildings and Grounds Director that you also approved earlier, the existing salary, and I'm going to, hopefully my memory is accurate as I'm looking at Kelly, the person leaving that position was making roughly 74,000 to 77,000. The pay grade now under the Whipley Study, the beginning salary is 57,000, and the midpoint is about 70,000. We will advertise, and the Administrative Committee has allowed us to go up to the $70,000 for an incoming candidate, and I think we can easily make that. We haven't begun the advertising, so that can show you the adjustments that are made with an employee who was at the 74,000, 77,000. The new employee coming in the door will be at that lower salary of 70,000, would be my guess, somewhere between the minimum, the 57, and the midpoint of 70.
Go ahead, Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned the Whipley Study. We looked at Opaaca, Marinette, and Okano, and in the case of the Clerk of Court, Opaaca was going to be paying the Clerk of Court 71,426 in 2018, and Okano was going to be paying the Clerk of Court 61,562. In my opinion, $65,000 per year is a very, very fair salary for the next four years. That's only $977 per year that we're talking about for the Clerk of Court. In the case of the Sheriff, Opaaca is going to be paying the Sheriff 94,479 at the end of four years, and Okano is going to be paying the Sheriff 83,657,000 at the end of four years. Per year, we're only talking about $4,950 per year for that particular position. I think the last place we want to reduce salaries is our law enforcement. As a citizen, I believe we should pay these people a salary that it's worth, and I believe 65,000 for the Clerk of Court and 90,000 for the Sheriff is a very fair salary, and I'm still defending my amendment.
Okay. Anybody else? Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my concern here is that there's at least seven or eight department heads that are between 90 and 98,000. And most of those are Monday through Friday department head people. The Sheriff's position is 24/7. And the Sheriff, I guess he can rely on his chief deputy and lieutenants and stuff to go to major things. Our current Sheriff, you know, went to all of the big events, whether they were on a holiday, Saturday, Sunday, at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, or whatever. So he's a lot more than a Monday through Friday. He's a 24/7 position, I'm speaking about the Sheriff, not the Clerk of Circuit Court. And I guess my concern is, these are department heads that have way, way less employees under them to supervise, and they're supervising one department. The Sheriff is supervising the Patrol Division, he's supervising the 911 Center, he's also supervising the Jail, all three divisions. So it's a much, much bigger operation. And if these other department heads are, you know, way up in the 90s, I guess I am concerned that what we approved at Admin, that the Sheriff's salary is really much, much lower. So, you know, I just wanted to get that in the heads of the people here, what I'm thinking.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Dale.
Well, you know, these are public offices that people run for. I don't think they run for the salary. That would be the wrong thing to run for, so they also are running to serve the public and show that they have interest in the community. It'd be interesting to see if they are running, because it's $90,000 or $84,000. So, once again, it's a public office, and I think they're running for the pride for the community also.
I must mention too that this is just salary correct, not benefits included in that.
That's correct.
A very good benefit package that goes along with the salary, I don't know...
For family health coverage, the cost to Door County is about $25,000. If the person is looking for single health coverage, the cost is about $10,000. Now, employees pay a portion of that, of course, but that is the benefit package, and I have not included retirement. Retirement, I'm looking at Shirley or Kelly, retirement for a public safety profession is higher than it is for the others, Shirley?
Correct.
Seventeen point two percent for a public safety official? And seven percent for, 7.5, I think it is, for a public safety official.
Thank you, 7.5 for Clerk of Circuit Court positions. So, in addition, there is a chief deputy in the Sheriff's Department that traditionally has been, I hear often from our Chairman, that that is the person that has a lot to say within that department. So in addition to the Sheriff, there is a chief deputy. And actually Supervisor Verley knows that well, because he worked in the Sheriff's Department.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Oh, and our former Sheriff may want to speak to the roles and responsibilities.
She wants retroactive pay.
Now, I wish Roy was there when I was in there. I guess, I guess all I can say is, I've listened to the comments here. If you're going to go out and do your job as the Sheriff, you're not going to sit home, you're going to be out on the extensive calls, and you're going to be doing what has to be done, people expect to see in the public, you're giving speeches numerous times, and to say that it should be anything less than these other department heads, there are people on the Sheriff's Department that definitely make more money than the Sheriff, they get overtime, they get the exact same benefits that the rest of the recognized union people before did. The Sheriff does not pick up sick leave, your sick leave stops at that point, as with the rest of the elected officials, which amounts to be quite a bit when it comes time to retire, and you're going to cash in your chips to carry on your insurance. When you look at the amount of hours that you put in, it goes way beyond 40 in any given week. Granted, you don't have to be to work every day of the week, but at the same time, if you're not there, people are going to be asking, where are you at? And you're going to be probably a one-term Sheriff. So I guess I support Roy 100%. Business comments, very valid. And I'm not exactly sure what the Chief of the City Service May makes, does an excellent job, but there's no comparison in the duties that you have between the two of them. It's countywide, including the city. So I definitely support the amount of money that Roy put together.
Is there any other comments, statements? If not, now, I must remind you that this is an amendment to the resolution, that Roy's amendment brings it to 90,000, is that straight on through?
For four years.
For four years, each year. And 65,000 for the Clerk of Court for the four years. That's what the amendment is. So we'll vote on the amendment. Go to your voter board. Any, no other questions? If not, go to your voter board. This is going to be interesting. That has failed on a vote of seven yes and 12 no. So now we'll go to the, is there any other questions before we vote for the vote for the resolution? Are you ready?
I'm counting.
Yep.
I'm ready.
Okay? Okay. This is the vote now in the original resolution, which is before you. Go to the voter board and vote. That has passed on a vote of 16 yes and 3 no. I guess we'll go to China. We will get the next one probably done, so. Bill Schuster and Bill Schuster.
I'm going to break.
We're on break? Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Sit back down. Okay, we're all ready to go here. What we're going to have is, we have a sister city in China, and we've had a number of people go there over the past few years. And the thing that we could join, still be a member of them in another year from now, I have to make a decision whether to remain a member as a sister city. And Bill Schuster and Bill Schuster, who both went there, representing the county and some other people, and I told them that they could come to the County Board and explain what happened. And I posed two questions to them before, so they're not being blindsided on, and they'll work it into their talk, I hope. And the first question I would add, is having this relationship with China, can you give me any specific examples of how this benefits the taxpayer and the citizens of Door County? And my second question is, should we continue our partnership, and what benefit do you see us receiving from them? So, Bill Schuster, who's going to lead it off? And they got like 20 minutes. Otherwise, they could be here for two or three hours, I think they tell me.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We met last week, and Dan and Maureen and I were talking about some other things, and Maureen was talking about someone, and Dan shouldn't worry, that person's cool. And then, how long were they talking? And Dan goes, yeah, Schuster and Schuter are cool, but they can talk too long, too, quote unquote. All right, so, can you start PowerPoint? All right, so, what we want to do today is a combination of things. We want to recap somewhat of the history of the sister city relationship. We want to give a trip report. We want to get input from the County Board and answer questions, and we want to talk a little bit, or at least tell you what our plans are for the next months as we work towards that June 2015 deadline that Dan talked about. All right, just the recap, and this will be really quick. This all started in 2004, when there was a offer from Genshin to become a sister city or a friendship city. And a resolution was signed, passed by the County Board and signed by the then County Board Chairman Charlie Most, establishing that relationship in 2005. In 2010, that relationship was expanded and clarified, and that was passed by the County Board and signed by then County Board Chairman Leo Zipper. In 2012, we had our last three or four visits from the Chinese, and they made some requests of Dan that we would send a delegation and also talk about the future of the relationship. Dan then sent both Bill Schuter and myself a letter asking us to serve as sort of the leads of an effort to look into the sister city relationship and have an informal advisory group to talk about continuing it and strengthening it, and also to respond to traveling to Genshin via delegation. Then, this past October 2013, a 10-person delegation traveled to our sister city. This is our delegation. I'll start from the right, and there's a few of them that are here today, and we'll just point that out. There's Mike Madden, who's here today in the back. This is Jiner Cruz, you know who he is. This is my wife Sonia, Bill Schuter and his wife Cheryl, Charlie Most, who is also here. Oh, I did, Cheryl, I can't see her, there you are, and Cheryl's there also. Diane McNeil, Kent Cruz, John Dietrich, and this is Shi Bing. His Western name, they give themselves Western names, I think, for us, actually. He goes by Parker, and he was the person we worked with organizing it, and he led us around when we were in the city.
Bill reminded you, went at your own expense, not taxpayers'.
I don't know if everyone heard that, went at our own expense and not taxpayers'. The trip, everybody on there financed their own trip, and there is, we'll talk a little bit about what that meant. In terms of the delegation, what we worked out is that the delegation would all make their way to Shanghai, and then we would meet at a, and people came at different times. I actually was in China for about a week before, and we met at an airport, and we traveled to, here is Genshin, and then later on, we traveled to, I have a hard time seeing here, that is Dali, I believe, and outside of Dali is the Linden Center. To give you a perspective of where you are, Beijing is up here, this is Miramar, Vietnam, Thailand, and North Korea. So it gives you a perspective of where we were. All right, first off, just, part of this is going to be cultural, part's going to be what the program is all about. We all arrived in Shanghai, and certainly many have heard how big Shanghai is, but just to put it in perspect... But just to put in perspective what's happening there, Shanghai is about the same size as Door County in area. And there are twenty-three, twenty-four million people and it's projected to be about fifty million in another twenty years. There are skyscrapers being built, several of them. I mean, you look around, they're, they're just building quickly. This one area called the Pudong over here was actually basically just small shops and agricultural land thirty years ago. It is now, you think you're in New York. Just the sight that I think everyone sees when they see pictures of Shanghai, that's looking across over the Pudong, the Chinese-like lights, neon lights. Everything, the lights on all these buildings are moving. There's a continuous parade of boats of all sorts, recreational, industrial, all with neon lights on. This river is a major highway in, in China. Actually, there's, there's transportation ferries, which I, I shared with Joe and just told him that he'd get a job in Shanghai anytime he's looking for it, so. So we met, we met then in the Shanghai, one of the Shanghai airports. And we went to Genshin. And this, this is the airport there. And one thing that, and Bill and I were just chatting a little bit before we came up here is, is that it's truly a country of great contrasts and differences. I mean, when you're in Shanghai, you're in one of the biggest, most modern cities on earth. And as we work our way across the country, you're going to get an idea of the rural area. Genshin is our sister city. It's a city of about one and a half million people. You know, when you talk to them, they point out, you know, that they're from a small, a small town. And, you know, then they ask how many people are in your town. Genshin's history and their claim to fame is ceramics and particularly porcelain. And about 600 AD is when they started making ceramics and porcelain. And it was the location of the royal kilns. And that's, it was only being made for the royalty. And they've continued and certainly have become quite a private or capitalistic system for, for selling ceramics.
Just look at that airport. That's the terminal building. I would say it's smaller than Green Bay's airport, so a city of, you know, that large, million and a half people. Obviously, their air transportation for the common people is not what it is, what we're used to in America. And it also shows you their, their commitment to ceramics. You see the panels on either side of the building, that's ceramic decoration. And then the street, streetlights are ceramic-covered poles. Waste containers are ceramic-covered containers, so they really are committed to their, their names.
You know, this picture shows construction going on. One thing, when you travel in China, there's construction everywhere. They are, they are really building. So we've made it to the sister city. We're going to be there for, for three nights. Things in, in some sense became very formal at one point. All of a sudden, we were told we're going to have this real important meeting. Names and positions are given to us and you really, you're, you really don't know what's going on sometimes. And we could tell the way our Parker was talking, this was very important. And we went to this, this conference room, I guess, and there was, I guess, four of us lined up in the front and some in the back, and then they were across the other. And this guy, I believe was the Vice Mayor, Bill, he's the Vice Mayor of the city, and he started making a speech. And Parker had told me about half an hour before I got there, you know, you do have to make a speech after he's done. So I'm quickly trying to come up with a speech. And I, I don't know what it sounded like, but one thing is good, sometimes I wear sort of baggy pants and you can't see my legs shaking inside of it. So it was one of those moments. But it's, I don't think we caused any international problems. After that, there was this ceremony where, where they presented us with a number of other items. That vase is, is sitting right over here along with, I hope you got a chance to look at some of the porcelain items that we have, have there. This was the first part of the trip that started getting involved with this interesting relationship of private sector, governmental sector, and the party. And we'll talk more about that as we go and, and we've tried to understand that and ask more about it. But this, this is a government official. One of the next steps was the ceramic school. It's, it's actually a university-level school. And one of the gentlemen who traveled here before, and help me with the name on.
Yang Jun.
Yang Jun. He has been here and he got his master's degree at UW Milwaukee. And it's this gentleman right here. And, and he's, he's working, he's the president of this now and he's working for his PhD. And, and a big challenge working on this project is trying to understand what different cultures mean. And you really need someone who's got a foot in both cultures to work your way through it. And Bill and I made a, or Bill sent actually an email to him the other day and he wanted to ask some questions. He says, well, by the way, I just arrived in Milwaukee because there's a very large ceramic teaching conference there. And Bill and I went down to talk with him and, and he's going to be very helpful as we work through some of the steps we need to do. This is me not being able to say no to make a fool of myself, even in a different country.
One of the things we're going to talk about later is some of the opportunities that they're presenting to Door County residents and, and businesses. And back at that school, they're actually renovating the, the top floor of that building into some dormitory space. And they basically, one of the offers they've made is free lodging for any Door County resident who would like to come and study ceramics and porcelain making at this school.
The invitation to the delegation was timed to be at the same time as the International Ceramic Fair. This is a worldwide, I don't know if it's the largest one in the world, but it's, it's huge. And there's people from all over the world displaying their ceramics. It's actually, it widens your understanding of what can be made out of ceramic. Impressive as it could be. Was kind of interesting, I go back a little bit to that, that formal speech time that we, we did. That was covered on television. So if you'd go on the television in your hotel room, you'd see the various speeches and things going on with the sister cities. And when we were walking around at, at this thing, and I think Mike Madden was with me at that time, a guy went up to Mike and wanted to know if I'm the guy on television and then wanted to get a picture of me because I, I was the guy on television. Actually, you do when you travel in China, there are people who just like having their pictures taken with you also.
And it wasn't just the height issue?
Well, it's, it seems that the taller people, Mike, Charlie, myself, they seem to like to take pictures of us. My wife isn't very tall and, and she has pointed that out, so. As we worked our way around the, the city and the area, went to a number of ceramic factories. There are, there are large factories that sort of mass produce items and they tend to be the, the lower quality. The ones which are more hand, hands-on tend to be the higher, higher quality. You can see that they're, they're sitting there and painting the designs. You know, when you, when you look at, like this is, this is porcelain. You look at this, they're painting on there, but you can't even see it until it's fired exactly what it's going to look like. I know, Bill, you had a couple of pictures of the larger factories, too. We just tried to show the detail. That's, this is their, their main economy is ceramics, education, and tourism that goes around, along with ceramics.
The other major industry in Jinjing, just interesting, is a military helicopter operation, a big, big factory there.
Continuing with ceramic stops, one of them was at the ceramic museum. And those, those ladies are actually paint, playing instruments all made out of ceramics. Here's a picture, Bill talked about things that are in the city that are ceramics. There's, those poles are made out of ceramics. There's actually a drainage ditch next to that that was lined with porcelain as we went along. The light shades and it's, it's everywhere. They're very, very proud. Just examples of various ceramics.
Again, the quality, I mean, this is something where if we had artists that wanted to study ceramics and learn new technology, new techniques, this is really a good place to go. They've been doing it so long, they perfected it and they've got very advanced. That middle vase there with all the gold leaf on it, I think that was worth fifty thousand dollars. And they also treated our group to a lot of, besides the tours, they treated us to some entertainment. Here was a theater they brought us to and put on a show again. This was all being done as part of the ceramic international fair. But we saw some acrobats, we saw some wonderful dancing, we saw an art exhibit, a painter, a local painter there that just blew us away. The quality of the, of the art there was just phenomenal.
So continuing with that whole, you know, three different relationships, the party, the government, and, and the private sector, we, we had a lunch with this gentleman and he, he's, he's a mid-level representative of the, of the party. And, you know, we, we brought items that, at our expense, where the group bought items to bring and present to the, the government and the party and private sector. We go along and that's, that's a ceremony that's going on right now. What's, what seems to be, is, you know, that the government runs the thing, but the party directs the government. You know, it's sort of that relationship. But don't lose track of their private sector development in terms of capitalistic systems. You know, they're, they are very much a for-profit operation running.
I wanted to tell you though, that before we go any further, that this trip was really made possible really by Bill here, providing the leadership for our entire delegation. He was invaluable to us. He's a well, well-traveled individual, so he felt very comfortable, had been to China before, so, as had Charlie Most, I think, through the two China travelers with us. So of course, that was very helpful to all of the rest of us in making arrangements and plans and reservations and tickets and things like that. So really indebted to Bill for, for that leadership. Again, my main mission, I've been involved in this program since the beginning, primarily just on the receiving end of delegations. But every other year, we've been visited by a Jinjing delegation of, you know, eight to ten or twelve people that have visited us and, and wanting to learn about our community and how we could foster and grow this relationship. So I've been involved in that side of it, arranging tours from the came and, and having meals with them, things like that. So my, of course, in my business of economic development, my main mission here was to find out, is there some business trade opportunities between Door County and Jinjing? So that was what I was primarily looking for. I, obviously, I enjoyed the travel and, and that part of it, but I, I, I worked hard at trying to discover what these opportunities might be. In doing so, I, we brought an extra suitcase stuffed with Door County products. You'll see the, the wine actually survived the trip without busting, which has made me, made us happy. We have Door County coffee, we have dry cherries, we have jams and jellies and what else? We had, we had a nice selection of some of the great foods that we offer here in Door County. So my mission here was to test the people we met with, is this something that they currently use and, and purchase? What is the price of that stuff? How, you know, how can you help us get these products in here so we can learn if there is a market for this, for some of our products? You know, on all the trips that they've come here, I've never felt that pressure that they're trying to sell us something. It's always been cultural and, and learning about our community and, and seeing our, what our business and communities look like. But I wanted to take advantage of this opportunity to see if there was any trade opportunities. So we had some good meetings. Here's a meeting with, on the right is a meeting with our government, a couple of government officials. You can help me out with that, Bill. And then our interpreter, the lady's the interpreter. There were several other people at that, at this meeting. And then on the left-hand side is a meeting with, Parker had made, you know, having made our plans known to Parker in advance, he identified a, a business in Jinjing that specializes in selling international products. So he brought us over there. We're meeting with the owner there on the bottom and his son on the top. Most businesses done over some tea, so we enjoyed some tea. But we had a nice discussion with him about his business, how, where does he get his products, what is the cost? And basically, the lesson learned there is what we saw on the shelves are coffees, dried fruit product, wine. So the products that we have in Door County to sell is, this would be a great outlet for it. If we wanted to get on his shelf, we would have to go through his wholesaler. He works exclusively with one wholesaler in, in Hong Kong to support and supply his business. And this is one of two locations that he's got for this business. So our, one of our next steps is to, to get the name from Parker of this wholesaler and start a dialogue with that person to see if there's some opportunities to, you know, explore testing some of our Door County products there. This is a lunch meeting that was hosted by Yang Jun. Bill mentioned Yang Jun before. He's in the front center and his wife is next door to him. And the rest of our delegation is surrounding him on this table. Again, that was one of the other things, we all travel at our own expense, except when we were in Jinjing, they, they covered our costs for lodging as well as all of our meals. In this case, Yang Jun covered our costs. This is in a private, very, very, very nice restaurant area. And then when we were in Dali, our lodging was covered, right? And we paid for our other costs. We'll get into that later. But anyway, Yang Jun is going to be the, if we're going to develop this relationship further in the future, I think he's one of the keys. Parker's great to work with, but Yang Jun has a better grasp of the English language, having been here and studied here, and he knows our culture. Parker hasn't traveled here yet, so that's always a little bit of a disadvantage if you haven't been in the country you're promoting. So Yang Jun, if we're going to go anywhere with this, he's going to be a key character to help us do that.
So then after we were in Genshin, we, we traveled on to the Linden Center. And the Linden Center is run by Brian and Jeannie Linden. They have a place up in Ellison Bay and I don't know the name of it, but it's a.
It's a Chinese antique place.
And, and they, they traveled to China to start a, a place. And this is near the, way in the west. We're getting close to the foothills of the Himalayas now. And their concept was they're going to develop, restore these historical areas and then have Westerners be able to come to China and, and learn the Chinese culture and be immersed in it. What's interesting is it's become so successful and popular that he was saying that over half of his clients are now Chinese tourists. And that's one of the things we'll talk about a little bit later. But the Chinese tell us that there's a, a class of Chinese that have the resources and are really interested in international travel and tourism. And that potentially is a good link with Door County. The Linden Center is, is a, it's a couple of buildings now and they've just got approval to do a third one. And it's in a little town where there are some large courtyard homes. And I don't know what years they were built, but they're quite old. And you, you can't own property there. The property is owned by the government and, but you can lease the property for fifty years. And the arrangement that, that Lindens have, it's some sort of governmental party, private sector relationship. And he, he just announced that he was going to be opening a third place. This is Brian Linden right here. They were, they're really wonderful hosts and we'll just show you a couple of things we did around there and then we'll get back to the sister city portion. Hospitality, this is the group having dinner, but they, they brought in various cultural presentations while we're at the Linden Center. Again, they were playing some of those, some ceramic, but other sorts of instruments. We had the opportunity to, to walk around the, the small town that they're in. And they've become very popular with the locals because of the economic help that that's providing the, that little town in. And they're also involved in the, in the schools. I, I believe there was a cooking group from Door County that was just there last, last month.
Sixteen Door County people.
It was sixteen people. This is the market for those of you who have traveled in, in countries like China. One of the big differences about how people eat in a country like China isn't so much what they eat, it's the fact that they don't stock up their houses with food for a week or, you know, you go your weekly shopping or two weeks. They literally go to the market, many of them, most of them go to the market every day, buy the items they're going to get and, and then bring them home. So when, when you're in China, and I've been in quite a few markets, they're fascinating places and anything you can think of, literally, anything you can think of in, in terms of food, you can, you can buy at the Chinese market. That's Jeannie Linden right there and there's Charlie behind her. This guy was just great to be with. He wanted me to smell every spice and thing that he had and wanted me to taste half of them. This is a picture that, that actually I put together. It's, it's, the Chinese color of luck is, is red and these are the doors into the courtyard. So it's just a picture that we had put together, it's on our wall at home now. While we were there, we bicycled around and went down and looked at the various parts of the village. This is. This is rice straw. They had recently got done with their harvest of rice and they were then cutting their straw and drying it and starting to plant the new crop. We went to a tea plantation in the mountain or farm, I'm not sure what it should be called. We picked our own tea, you can see Bill doing it there, and then we processed it and someone has a package of tea that when the group gets together, I guess we're gonna see what our tea tastes like. This is Dali. I believe this is, isn't a Buddhist temple, right? That's a Catholic church. The vast majority of the Chinese are Buddhists and that's a Catholic church at the place. Bill and I both are fledgling woodworkers and we heard there was a street of woodworking and we went down that street and it was shop after shop, small shops of guys building furniture and very intricate furniture. Rural life in the area, you can see that most of the farmers have very little plots built, they were a thirty acre? A fifth of an acre, most farmers. That's their entire farm is a fifth of an acre. They don't have recognized. I was reading that, that's actually a problem when someone gets a tractor or something because they can come in and then actually put others out of business in competition. Here you can see they're starting, I believe, to replant the tea, I mean, the rice.
No, this is garlic.
Oh, that's garlic there, okay. And this is, we went into a, right in the town in one of the courtyards, there was a regular folks and they had two cows in there and they're making cheese. And it's the cheese similar to, at the point of curds, right? They're making these long stretched things which are early in the part of cheesemaking. It was actually quite good. This is just rural life of China. One of the things that I actually sent this one back to my office when I was in China. And what this is, is I told them this is nutrient management in China. You know, someone came with a big wheelbarrow and they're spreading their piles of manure out on the field. So they're doing the same thing, it's just a little different scale. These are made to flood, they walk on those paths. That are teenage girls working to bring the straw in from the fields. By the way, everybody, everyone was friendly. And anywhere that I've been in the world, including China, that ninety-five percent plus the people are just normal, happy people that wanna, you know, be friendly and they're curious about you and you're curious about them. So, couple slides where we've got some narratives and some questions. Really, as we start out, that what we have is, we have an agreement with Jingzhejing and the county and it expires in June 2015. It remains in a force unless one of the sides terminates it. So at some point, as we approach June 2015, this board is gonna have to make some decisions as to the future of the sister city relationship. Okay. Second one. They have expressed an interest in continuing and further in developing the relationship with Door County. The relationship the past ten years has not been what a sister city relationship really should be. They've sent some people over, we've sent people over, but we really haven't grown that relationship in terms of education and business and cultural displays and it's really has not. And it hasn't been given the energy that it takes to do that. And they're interested in doing that. We've got a couple items that there, and we aren't gonna go in great detail, but what they have expressed, they would like to have additional delegation exchanges. As Bill pointed out, we have the offer that Door County students would be able to stay for free at the ceramic school, the university that we were talking about. We met with a private sector artist and they're interested in having private sector exchanges, not even a governmental program. Since we went back, we got a formal offer that we should work on civil servant exchange program, which the way we understand it, they're looking at one or two government employees going back and forth and working for a year or two. And they're making that proposal and they're offering, they actually offered, told us what the job would be, it'd be involved in working in the International Ceramic Fair and they would pay all housing and wages and the whole works. I guess, Bill, you're gonna take the next two.
Yeah, the item E up there is kind of what I've already mentioned, that if we were to try to attempt to get more of our products on the market in our sister city, our next task there is to locate this wholesaler in Hong Kong and, again, talk price and numbers and see if it, have him test our products, see if he feels comfortable. Certainly it looks, from what we saw on the shelves, that our products are comparably priced there. Of course, we have to get them there, it's a long way away and there's certainly some additional costs in selling in China versus selling here. So whether it's gonna make economic sense, I'm gonna say it's probably doubtful, but we are gonna go through the process of identifying or documenting that. We have local businesses that are very curious about this. Tim Lowry from Simon Creek Winery has shown interest in this program from the beginning and he went through some efforts to try to do some, you know, ship a case of, he believes cherry wine would be a good seller there. He spent a fair amount of time in China in his military career and his post-military career, so he understands the country. They do a lot of fruit wines, so he thinks our cherry wine would be a big seller there. But we gotta get it there. He's not been able to do it on his own, so again, using our connections that we have now, we at least have an opportunity to investigate that and answer the question. We didn't know how to do it before, but we do now. So the last one there is F, is, we were introduced to this very briefly in a meeting there, but we couldn't really comprehend what he was talking about. You know, the language barrier comes into play at times. But since we've been home, we've seen written emails from them about this project. And I'm not sure how Bill pronounces it. I've got it pronounced here as Toshian?
Sure.
Okay. So what they're doing, Jingzhejing Government, is taking these historic pottery or ceramic factory areas in their community that have been run down and abandoned, and they wanna re-energize them and get some new uses there, get them, make them into a cool, new business and community sector of their community. So Bill's gonna show a few slides here of their renderings of what this project looks like. This is, I think there's about four separate areas in the community that have these historic properties. And here's probably a rendering of what one of the, you see the current state of the buildings-
The house we built there.
Would be, and after the renovations. And so they have a variety of uses envisioned in this new development, from shops to restaurants to offices to factories. So it's gonna be, it sounds like it's gonna be a pretty exciting area. And their offer to us here is at, sounds like at no cost or very low cost, they would love to feature their sister cities in an outdoor plaza area. And they, we are one of four or five sister cities that they have around the world. We know there's one in France, the Netherlands-
Italy.
Italy and Korea, I believe. So they'd like to feature their sister cities in a plaza, outdoor plaza area. And this plaza, they set anywhere between, you know, eleven thousand square feet to twenty-two thousand square feet. So that's quarter of an acre to a half an acre in size. They'd like it to have architecture representing our community and our culture. So we'll need to get some of those kinds of folks involved in this process if it's gonna go anywhere.
They've gone as far as they've been asking us if we could send a designer or designers so they, what they could build. And that quarter to a half acre is per sister city.
Yeah.
They wanna build it in the architectural design of Door County.
They could have a grass roof for goats.
It sounds like they would cover the cost of that person when he gets there. Now, travel costs would have to be borne elsewhere, but they're willing to cover these costs of trying to get this space. And they seem to be in kind of a bit of a rush to do this. So we're, fortunately Yan Jun has stepped up. As Bill mentioned, we went down to Milwaukee last week to spend a couple hours with him to get his take on this. Before that day was over, he had already been in touch with both Parker, our representative, plus a Chinese city official, that kind of is a high official with this project. So Yan Jun is very well-connected there. He comes from a prominent family, he's in the ceramic industry there, so he's certainly a tremendous ally for us in something happening with this relationship. But anyway, he's getting some answers to us to the questions that we had as to what are the details with this deal. And he's confirmed with us that yes, this outdoor plaza area would be at no cost to you. He also said that there's an opportunity for indoor space at reduced rent rates where they'd like to see. They'd love to see local foods, local products. So this presents another retail outlet opportunity as opposed to a private sector neighborhood that we showed you before. So again, we have to have further discussions with Yan Jun to really ferret out what exactly is the deal. Sounds like he's, again, he seems to be so committed to this. He said, "I'm even willing, if Door County steps up and shows some interest here, I'm willing to raise significant amounts of money in Jingzhejing to help invest in making that private sector retail space or restaurant space, what have you, available to Door County." So that's, you know, we don't know the parameters of that, but we just have those commitments from Yan Jun to help us out. But that's gonna be dependent on Door County showing even more significant interest in participation and support for this program.
Sounds like something the Door County Economic Development Corporation says.
And that's really, that's number one that we have up here, that some economic opportunities appear possible for the arts and the business tourism. And we really point, we say possible. It's complicated stuff. Number two, and we've alluded to that a little bit, that very different cultures, government and people appear, they appear to seek a friendly and mutual beneficial relationship. They are, they're committed to this relationship. Number three, the challenge. Culture and language makes this challenging. You know, when we have meetings in this building and everyone's nodding their head that they know what the other person said and meant, and then the next day you find out no one was on the same page, this is even worse than that. So now, we need help with someone who's got a foot in both cultures, is what it amounts to. The fourth one, that future success will require continued county board support, county business, artists, interests, involvement and commitment and greater efforts by the community. Should not remain the status quo. We're reaching a point in the next months to come that we either commit to doing something with this sister city relationship and build it to what a sister city relationship could be, or we shouldn't. You know, it just shouldn't continue as it is. Well, really then the questions for the county board, and they are, you know, what are the sister city program measures of success and value? I think you're gonna take the first couple here.
Yeah. I've kind of addressed this question already. We believe there are some private sector business opportunities that local businesses in Door County could benefit from, but we're still working on exactly what are the parameters of that opportunity and the feasibility of that opportunity. So I don't have a definitive answer for you today. I can tell you that there's some opportunity there. I would say the greater opportunity is if our potters and our ceramic artists and our tourism group would see this as an opportunity and want to investigate it further. They've made a lot of offers from housing to training to artist exchange that we talked about, so it would be pretty interesting if the artist community in Door County stepped up and pursued those.
And this is a question that this body needs to answer at some point as we're working through this, is, can this program be deemed successful if the value of it focused on arts, culture and education? And it goes back to the first one. Can it only be deemed successful if it returns private financial gains to local business? You know, what, how do you judge the value of a sister city? Does it have to be profit-making only? Is that the only judge? Or are there other ways measured? And the top of this slide is questions for the county board. We need your input and thoughts on that. Then the third one, which dovetails into that, is what is the role of county government and who in county government? These things don't happen, they don't just happen. It takes energy and dedication of people to make them happen. So these are truly questions for the county board and I hope you folks think about those and stop by, give us a call. We want to know what you're thinking because we also don't want to put a lot of energy into things and they're dead on arrival coming here. So we need input. What's next? All right. So what we have is the June 2015 expiration renewal date. I think, Bill, you've hit on these.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we're still in the data collection phase yet and confirming what their offers are on some of these initiatives. So to tell you today if these are feasible, we just can't. It's gonna take a little bit of time. The important thing is, now we've got some, we've been there, we have a sense for the lay of the land and I think we're gonna be able to make better decisions to help businesses or the culture of Door County take advantage of these opportunities. And we have some names and some telephone numbers and emails of people that are very anxious to help us.
And, you know, the last one on that slide is that we know we have a timetable that we need to come back to the county board. I think we have to work up some milepost during that time period as, so we get some feedback from this body. Again, I'm sure I'll speak for Bill. Also, we don't want to put immense energy into doing different things if this body isn't interested or only judges value one way or the other. This is a slide for questions and quite honestly, I selected these pictures for a reason that is, you know, they're just people like we are. You know, there's wealthy, very wealthy people, there's people who are scraping together every little penny. People come up to you with their kids, they just want, they want you to talk to their kids, they want to say ni hao. I mean, I got three words. I can say hi, goodbye and order beer. That's all I can do in Chinese at the moment. So, Dan, we talked briefly on this, before we answer some questions, Dan, is it okay if any of the three have something to say right now? Brief comments?
Briefly, because we've got another seven items.
There's a mic right there, Mike, if you want.
We got a lot to go on the county board and we have to break for lunch and do something.
Yes, I'd like to make one comment. Mike Madden, I went along as a person with education background, I'm an educator. One point I'd like to make is there's some real opportunity here. And quite often, as educators, we feel there's a brain drain growing on in Door County. A lot of our young people that are looking for interesting opportunities are leaving the county. We can bring some of the opportunities here and I think this sister city relationship could be a vehicle to do that. Thank you.
Charlie or Cheryl or, nothing? Good. All right. Any questions? Comments?
Yeah, first of all, I just would like to thank both you, Bill, and both you Bills, for bringing back a lot of memories to me. Because I've been to China, I've been to Shanghai, I've been to Xi'an, I've been to Beijing, I saw the Terracotta Warrior thing, I saw the wall. I've been to a couple of ceramic factories over in China, I've been to their markets and you're bringing back memories to me. It was awesome. And what I would say to everybody on the county board or everybody in the room is, if you haven't been to China, get it on your bucket list. It's a great, great experience to go over there and see it. People in Shanghai, they wanna be like us. They dress like, they wanna dress like the Western world and they love Americans and you're right, they like to take pictures of you and practice their English. And yeah, thank you for all the memories that you brought.
Nice comments.
Charlie briefly, what?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dan's in charge, not me.
Huh? Briefly, no, Charlie.
I just wanted to say, I bring a unique perspective off the first to go over, signed the first agreements in China. I believe when you look at the history, gotta go back, I think the November, December I came back from China, we did a presentation to the county board and everything is in there, we did a PowerPoint in front. But the contrast now is like when I went back to Jingzhejing, the building I was in first with the Ceramic Art Fair was just small. They built the second one, I broke ground for it and I asked where the trees were that I had planted, so it was part of a groundbreaking ceremony. They have been moved on, that's gotten bigger. And it's obvious when you go over there, they don't really need us. I mean, they filled out a neat book, I have it at home, of their sister cities, they wrote pretty much verbatim what Bill Schuster had sent them. But I think in here, you gotta measure this in terms of the cultural exchange and I will mock what Biz says, until you go over, you don't get how much they look up to Americans. You get what the press, you know, what the federal people and their national people go at. And as Bill tried to explain too with their government, the- And as Bill tried to explain too, with their government, the party is the most important. Everyone else, you might as well be a monkey banging a drum if you're in the municipal government up Jingdezhen. I hate to say it, but the mid-level officials you meet with are all part of the party. They're all party officials, that's where the road meets the rubber. And I know, Dan, you know, you look at this and you think maybe you can do it as a community, but you still need the county board backing to make this work. And if you don't have the county board backing, then there's really no point in doing it. But I think culturally enriched, if you can get these exchanges going with students, bring people over, it benefits us. And if you look at China, where they are in the world, there's a big middle class now. There will be tourism here, there's no doubt about it. Very interested in the world. I got stopped, well, I'll be really quick, Dan, I won't go too much longer, but I was in Guilin, went on tour of some of the parks, and I got stopped by students and they wanted to interview me. And right away, we started talking about the press, and they talked about, oh, the press doesn't do this and that. Well, look at us, our own press, and look at just the current Malaysian issue, how information trickles. So I told them that each press is the same, you know, keep asking questions, but there is, there's a curiosity there about America, and they do love us. I can attest to the pictures even when I wasn't with these guys that they were taking with me, or people who just took me in, like, as I was by myself or whatever, maybe part of their group. They really do, there's a whole status thing about with America, and they're really curious to still learn from us. And now they all complain about Malaysia and other places taking away business from them, because they have, their wages have increased 10 times since I was there the first time. So it's growing, I mean, it's a dynamic, and it really is a feather in our cap in Door County that we are, have a relationship with China. So look at what sister cities mean. Basically, that's it for me.
Thanks, Eric. There's one real quick thing, when we were there, there was the whole government shutdown thing that happened in Washington, and Sonia and I'd go out for dinner, and people would come up to us and ask us, "How is the United States going to be able to continue?" And my explanation was, "That's democracy. That's what you get when you have two democracies, people can say whatever."
I don't, I realize it's too early to know where this is going or to make any decisions, but it seems to me, and I've been to China as well, and it seems to me this is an opportunity that we can only see a small piece of, that there could be ripple effects down the line and maybe the tip of an iceberg. So I would, I would love to see us pursue it and see where it goes, see what the possibilities are.
Chuck was.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, when you're saying it's up to us, are you looking at a financial contribution from us or some other type of support?
I think that that question remains to be answered down the road, and we'll wait till they get more information. There's the possibilities of forming a committee to look into, see if it's beneficial. I go back to my one question, is that we got to look at the benefit to the taxpayer, the people of Door County, and et cetera. And if there's not enough information, you have to make a decision. They got more now than they've ever had, and some's still coming, and we'll, it's not, just time, good time to discuss it right now. Maybe in two, three months from now when you get more stuff. So, and we got a lot of stuff to go here, unless we're going to break for dinner.
All right, that was our 20 minutes.
Right. That was our 20 minutes. That was half an hour ago.
Okay.
Longer than that.
Almost an hour. 20 minutes to an hour.
That's not bad for those.
Okay, I don't think we have a lot that we can't get done real quickly here. Next one is the authorizing compensation increase for certain county employees. Would someone like to make a motion to get this on the floor?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
And seconded by Cleat. Maureen, you want to explain it, or?
Certainly. The Whipley study created pay grades for our employees. There are approximately 21 pay grades. There's a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum. The maximum is 115% of what the Whipley study determined the market for these jobs would be. The resolution that's before you, first of all, let me explain why it's before you. We had set money aside in last year's budget, but we needed to take care of our two bargaining units that still have full bargaining post Act 10. There are deputy sheriffs union, you've approved that contract, two-year contract a few months ago. Today, hopefully, the next item, you'll be approving the EMS contract. Once those two collective bargaining agreements are in place, the time is then to discuss what you would like to do with existing employees. This resolution calls for an increase of 1.66% for all employees that are below the 115%, with the exception of those hired after January 1, 2014. There is money in the budget, our finance director is here, if you'd like to hear from her, that has been set aside to pay for the 1.66% increase. Did I take less than two minutes on that?
It was very important, we got to discuss it. David, do you have anything to add to that, or?
Just to reiterate what Maureen said, we had talked about this in both finance and admin prior to the first of the year, that we wanted to wait till after the bargaining units agreements were completed before we forwarded any additional pay compensation or increase for 2014 to the board.
Okay. Go ahead, David.
So as written, this would be retroactive to January 1st?
Yes.
Yes, sir. And again, I want to make this very clear, anyone hired after January 1, 2014 would stay at the level that they were hired at, and this would not include those employees that, with the Whipley pay study, were at 115% or above. It's all those employees who are below that 115%.
Rough number, how many are at 115 or above? Don't be exact, but a rough number.
I'm going to ask the HR director. If I had to guess, I would guess about 100, but I'm probably wrong on that number.
I thought you said 80.
Kelly?
How many are above 115? At 115 or above?
How many employees? Number of employees?
You don't have to be exact, but is 100, is that real?
82.
100, is that, is that a rough, so about a third of our labor force?
I think the chairman is guessing 80. He's looked at the same studies I have. I'm guessing 100. I think we're probably somewhere in between those two numbers, yes. Our workforce is 350, so yes.
So 20%?
Somewhere in there.
Want to talk about moral issues? So we're not giving them a raise? Just throwing it out?
Well, I think that's why we had the study done for salaries, and had to try to bring it into sync with the private sector, and some were underpaid by the study, and some were overpaid by the salary. We were trying to bring them back in sync with the local market. And so, if you're going to give raises, which is to the under 1, then you got to start thinking about what you're going to, you can't give everybody, you're never going to bring it back in sync. And that's what we're trying to do, I think.
And if I could add to that, each year, each year, the compensation study advances by the cost of living. We estimate that the cost of living is somewhere in the 1.66 to 2% rate. This number will be provided by Whipley each and every year. So as, for example, if you have somebody that's currently at 115%, if the compensation study is aged next year by 2%, that person will be reduced, they'd be eligible for a pay raise if we consider, if this is approved today, and this is the way we proceed in all future raise allocations. So eventually, the Whipley study, or those persons over 115%, will catch up and be eligible for a pay raise.
Any other questions? Roy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to exclamation. We just got them voting on Resolution Number 2014-24, where the raise was of 1.5%. And we use the Whipley study for that rationale. And now we're using the Whipley study for the rationale of 1.66. I believe our administrator did point out that it's the cost of living is where he came up with the 1.66. Is that correct?
As determined by the state of Wisconsin. Ms. Hendy came up with the 1.5, and I think what she was referring to is a guess for next year. The 1.66 is this year, as established by the state of Wisconsin for bargaining purposes. That's where the 1.66 came from.
I just wanted to point out that we're being very inconsistent with our raises, 1.5 versus now 1.6.
Well, 1.66 for 2014, the 1.5 was for 2015, 16, it was a guess on the part of our human resources director. So it's 1.66 for this year, 2014. What you're referring to was an increase for 2015, or 16, 17, 18, of 1.5%. Kelly, anything additional to add, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman?
The 1.5 was an average with some of the information that I already.
The 1.5 that I used was just an average from some of the percentages that I had gotten from other counties. A lot of the other counties in the state are in the same position that we are at, they're looking at their elected officials for clerk of courts and sheriff right now. So a lot of that information isn't in and hasn't been approved by their county boards as well. So I had a few that I averaged, and that's what I used. When we go back in four years to look at that, we'll look to see what the history was as well, so. And the 1.66 number is a number that is determined by, do you remember who, Department of Administration or?
Department of Revenue provides.
Department of Revenue.
Based on a CPI benchmark, and is given to the Wisconsin Employment Relation Commission for purposes of raise are given to representative general municipal employees.
And remember, we still, we have at present just the two unions, but we do have some other employees that the state of Wisconsin is still working out all the details. We believe they're no longer represented. I think their union believes that they are the general municipal employees, and so that's where we came up with the 1.66%.
Any other questions? If not, go to your voter board and vote yes or no for the resolution.
Hold on. A lot of clicking buttons, they're not going anywhere. Okay, now maybe try. Whoop. Well, it did.
Okay, that is passed on the vote of 15, yes, one no, and one abstained, and four absent. We're slowly losing control here. Next item is the approval of the collective bargaining agreement EMS. Joel, you were part of that, you want to make a motion and?
Administrative committee trumps this, so I'll make a motion to bring it forward with further explanation from the admin committee.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ken. Do you want to explain this one? I think you just did, but just reiterate the 1.6.
Sure. Matter of fact, I think I'm going to turn this one over to our corp counsel, who may remember some of the numbers better. This is the EMS agreement.
Nobody wants?
You had the benefit of having the collective bargaining agreement, the tentative collective bargaining agreement that was negotiated. A couple of points. One, the core elements of this are identical to the collective bargaining agreement that was ratified with the Deputy Sheriff's Association. By core elements, I mean pay, the Wisconsin retirement system contribution, and the contribution towards the health insurance premiums were all identical. You have to keep in mind that the emergency services employees and the Deputy Sheriff's Association are public safety employees. When the state passed Act 10 and 32, they exempted, for the most part, public safety employees from the operation of Act 10 and 32. So, I don't know if anybody has any specific questions, having had the collective bargaining agreement in front of you. If not, I can detail the wage increases. This is a two-year agreement, retroactive to January 1, 2014. There is an across-the-board wage increase of 2%. Effective December 1, 2014, there is an across-the-board wage increase of 1%. What that means for 2014 effectively is a 3% lift at the end of the year. Effective January 1, 2015, there's a 1% bump, and effective July 21, 2015, there's a 2% bump, which is again effectively a 3% lift at the end of the year. As the quid pro quo for the wage increase, this bargaining unit, much like the sheriffs, have agreed to contribute a sum towards the Wisconsin retirement system. By the end of this agreement, they will be paying 4%. Right now, they're paying nothing. They have also agreed to increase their contribution towards the health insurance premium from 10 to 12.8%. And one element of this that is not entirely resolved yet in the court system, but as of the date we've negotiated this, the health care plan design, whatever that means, is not an appropriate subject for bargaining. So we were able to incorporate all the changes we've made in our health care plan design, consolidated those into one plan now, and all the employees are subject to one health care plan, and we believe anyway that we're going to realize some savings from that. The rest of the agreement is essentially status quo from last time.
We'll go to the voter board and vote yes or no.
Is that probably a horse?
And? David? That is passed on 17, yes, no objections. Next item, text amendment to Gibraltar. Ken Fisher, you get a chance to talk again.
And what I'm going to say is, Mr. Chairman, I would like to have Mariah Good, the planning director, come up here, because she could certainly give a more understandable and concise explanation to this than what I could.
You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the report, the text amendment report regarding the zoning districts in the town of Gibraltar.
Is there a second? David, seconding. Go ahead, Mariah.
Thank you. In the early 80s, property owners on Chambers Island petitioned for and had placed into the county zoning ordinance text, which required a minimum lot size for lots that printed on water of three acres, and for inland lots, 10 acres. So that, what we referred to as an overlay for Chambers Island, was in place, starting in, I think, 1984, up through the 1995 ordinance, which is the ordinance that we have in place now. And that text language was carried forward in that 1995 ordinance. And then in 2005 and in 2006, when the town of Gibraltar had adopted its comprehensive plan and was looking at implementation mechanisms, my predecessor worked with the town to develop a number of new zoning districts for Gibraltar. And at some point, and I am not privy to when or why or how, the decision was made to create actual districts for Gibraltar rather than to just have text dictate the lot size requirements for Chambers Island. So those new districts, Chambers Island Shoreline and Chambers Island Woodland, were created, a map was created, and those have been in place for the last, what, eight years, I guess? Last year, a Chambers Island property owner noticed that that actually does make a difference, that's a change from what was in place before. Right now, if I am on Chambers Island and I own a large waterfront lot, I'm zoned Chambers Island Shoreline, that means I can take that entire large lot and divide it into three-acre lots, as opposed to what the previous text said, which would be that I could make three-acre lots along the water, and then all the other lots would have to be 10 acres. So once the Chambers Island Association Board realized that this was in place, they talked to me about how to fix it, and we developed the text amendments that are in front of you right now, which would eliminate those two districts, the Chambers Island Shoreline and the Chambers Island Woodland, and just create one new district called Chambers Island. And there's two sets of, subsets of requirements. If you're on the water, once again, you'll have to have a three-acre lot, or a three-acre minimum. And if you're not on the water, then it would be a 10-acre minimum. So basically, this is putting back in place what they had between 1984 and 2006. And then the accompanying, the next report and ordinance that you'll be looking at, once you've presumably created the text for this new district, then you will be changing the map to reflect that new district.
Mariah, is that a three-acre contiguous lot?
Yes, and it's got to be, I don't have it written for me, and the width for the lot needs to be met at the waterfront and in the, in the middle of the lot as well, which is true for all of our zoning districts.
Are there any questions? All those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed, now we need a motion, and we'll take a roll call vote on the text amendment.
Make the motion.
Hugh made motion, seconded by Susan. Is there any questions? Otherwise, go to your voter board and vote or up or vote or down. That has passed, one more person. Biz?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
There, that has passed on 17, yes. Zero no. Now- Now, this next one, Kenny, you want to start off on the...
I'll make motion to accept the zoning ordinance amendment.
Well, you want to do the report first.
Wait, do we have, am I on the wrong page here? Yes, I am. Excuse me. Yeah. Make motion to approve the report for the county board for the amendment to the map of the town of Gibraltar, again dealing with Chambers Island. It should be noted that, and...
Let me get a second here. Is there a second? Susan, or? Go ahead.
It should be noted that we had one individual come and bring this forward. He was representing the Chambers Island property owners. I forget if that's the exact title of it or not, of the organization. But he did represent the vast majority, he didn't know how many, but the vast majority of the island owners. And as he, as this was coming forward, there was nobody. All the landowners were contacted, nobody was in opposition to this.
Okay. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Do you want to make a motion to amend maps?
I will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Feierstein. Is there any questions? If not, we'll go to the voter board. Are you ready? And vote yes or no. You're getting quicker. That's passed on a vote of 17, yes. Zero, no's. Is there any oral committee reports? Think of yourself on before daylight saving time. It's 12 o'clock now. Any committee review? Anybody want to review the committees? Vouchers, claims, and bills? Next county board is Tuesday, April 15th at 9:00 a.m. Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, wait.
One thing here.
Cleat, you got the motion when he gets done talking.
He's found a turban.
Cleat's last ed, Hugh's going to second it, I hope.
Jerry Mandrick, not in Iowa, page 20, I did find it. I just, to show that I do read this, and I did not fish out it. Now, just wait now. I hear. By law, the legislative service agency starts with population equality, one man, one vote, in parentheses.
Thank you.
Rehearing.
The ballot is run. Motion to adjourn is by Cleat, seconded by Hugh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank goodness.